We want to roll call Jake.
Council Eastwood is absent, Council Morrison.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bissonnet.
Here.
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Council Orange Tree.
Here.
Council Downs.
Here.
Council Rankin.
Here.
Presentation of Town Council Recognitions, we have a couple tonight, the first is Lily McCoy, Vista Volunteer, BBHCC.
Lily, you could come up to the podium. Welcome and thank you for coming. It is my pleasure this evening to recognize Lily McCoy, who is the Vista Volunteer for the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition, in recognition for her work in our community and the region over the past year. Although Lily has been an employee of the Bucksport Bay Healthy Community Coalition, she has played a key role for the town of Bucksport in many ways as well. Lily is responsible for having completed the AARP Dashboard Program that is linked on our town website, which provides important information for seniors and others as to what services are available in Bucksport. She has also been a driving force in starting a Good Morning Program in collaboration with Bucksport Police to check in with seniors and others who wish to participate in the community on a weekly basis. Lily initiated a partnership with RSU 25's Adult Education Program and other community organizations to create a tech literacy program for older adults. She went on to help write a successful grant that will be used to purchase computer tablets for participants in that program. Lily has been a key individual in working with the Main Center for Disease Control to line up arms for extra COVID shots with public health nursing. She's helped to develop COVID information posters for businesses, designed a mailer for distribution of COVID information, and assisted in developing a public service video regarding COVID-19 and mask wearing. She maintains minutes, prepares the agendas, and sets up our monthly Bucksport Service Network meetings, which have been ongoing for the past year, and does research on meeting topics as well. She has also worked with the town and other partners in revitalizing the Thriving in Place Program to help seniors and those with ability challenges remain in their homes. In addition to these items, Lily has worked in assisting Bucksport Bay Healthy Community Coalition with many other projects, staffed the very active Senior Resource Committee, and helped the organization define a job description for the part-time consultant that they are seeking to replace Lily. Replacing is the wrong word. Lily has set a very high bar for the next person hired. Her work has been exceptional. She has always been willing to step up, to help, and to do whatever is necessary. I have a bag of Bucksport goodies here for Lily to take with her to remember us, as well as a letter of recommendation to take with her, which may help her in future educational and employment endeavors. She can unpack the goodie bag at her leisure, but I want to give her the Town of Bucksport lapel pin, which is provided to every member of the Bucksport team. You may be leaving to pursue your public health and nursing career dreams, but you will always be one of us.
Can we get you stopped?
Oh, I can't get that bag of goodies.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
And then you want to say for quick or?
Oh, it's just, it's been a pleasure working with the town manager and all of the community members of Bucksport, and really appreciate this goodie bag and the year I've had here, we've learned a lot. So take care and I'll always remember it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lily.
Next is Bucksport Pride, presentation to local schools.
I am fully vaccinated, so I'd like to remove my mask. Good evening, I'm David Weida, Bucksport citizen. Thank you so much for allowing us to be on the agenda tonight with a very happy wrap-up of our Bucksport Pride Month this past June. I'm starting this off with a bit of history as to what brought me here and what brought all of us here after our Pride Festival that started for me 42 years ago. In my activist career, I suddenly found myself opening a new office for the Human Rights Project in Kansas City, which was an agency that I co-founded with a friend of mine to address issues of concern to the LGBTQ community in the Kansas City area. Many people don't know that Kansas City even at that time had a million and a half people. When I tell people I'm from Kansas City, they think, oh, what, 50,000 people? And I remind them that no, a million and a half people, and we organized and mobilized around LGBTQ rights, security, health, progress, safety, all of the issues that are of concern to any marginalized community throughout our history. So proud of the work we did there with 5,000 volunteers, and I was actually a paid queer rights activist from 1989 until 1994, something I will always be proud for. It launched my career and the trajectory of my work for human rights. When we were opening a new office for the first time, we'd been working out of our homes, my co-founder and co-director, and somebody came forth with enough money for us to rent an office space. So we were moving in the morning, we were moving literally everything in, including the phone, and I'm talking about a dial phone, of course. And literally, if I hadn't had a witness there, nobody would believe this story, but the two co-directors of the Human Rights Project were standing there. I plugged the phone into the wall, as soon as it made contact, the phone rang. I looked at my buddy and I said, I guess we say the Human Rights Project. So I did. A timid scared voice on the other side said, I'm black, I'm 17, and I'm a lesbian, and I don't have anybody to talk to in my family or at my school. I got this number by calling the information line for the phone company and asking if there was anything that had the words lesbian or gay in the topic, in the title. I knew then that my work was going to be productive and gratifying and important. It hasn't changed from that day. Back in February of this year, a few friends and I, talking about what would it be like to see if we could pull together a pride celebration in Bucksport, Maine, and why we felt we needed to do it. The reasons haven't changed for me from 40 years ago. We do this work because it's important for our next generation of LGBTQ youth to understand that they are not alone, they have a future of joyfulness ahead of them, if they can embrace their identities and work for the future that will allow them to be free and happy. And we knew that we had students and young people in Bucksport that needed this to be shown to them through a public demonstration of why celebrate gay pride. I couldn't have been happier to be working with a committee, you know, I'm the old guy on the block suddenly. I'm surprised when I look in the mirror and realize that this is, at age 62, 42 years of activism, and I was working with younger people that were so wonderful and had so much to teach me about what the younger generation was going to respond to and what they needed, and how we could collaborate to pull together an incredible moment for Bucksport. The statistics haven't changed either from 40 years ago. LGBTQ youth are three times more likely to attempt suicide than their non-LGBTQ counterparts, and that's worldwide. We still have an issue that has to be understood by a lot of people who don't understand it. We always hear words when we're doing this kind of work around things like, it's a choice, or instead of using the term sexual orientation, they'll say sexual preference, as if it's something people can change. I don't want to get into political discussion at all, but take it from me, 42 years of activism, I have had countless people come into my office and say to me, my parents want to send me to a reparative therapy program, which is disastrous for people. My parents are kicking me out of the house because they think this is a choice, which is disastrous for anybody that that happens to at a young age. That office that I talked about opening, within three weeks, the office next door to me, which had been vacant, a new client moved in, a new agency moved into the next door office, and I quickly learned it was an agency addressing homeless youth issues in Kansas City. And when I introduced myself to Terry, the director, he said, David, you know it's no mistake that we're moving in right next door to you. I said, what do you mean? He said, the bulk of our homeless youth in Kansas City, he actually said, upwards of 75% are on the streets because of sexual identity and sexual orientation issues that are plaguing their family, and their answer was to kick them out of the house. Again, another warning signal for me, that this was going to be lifelong work, that I would have to be committed to, with a heart completely dedicated to the future of our community, the future of our youth worldwide, the notion that every child deserves the opportunity to express themselves as who they are, have a fulfilling life, and that includes love, that includes family, that includes building a community together with everybody who's here to do that. Our celebration in Bucksport in June was phenomenal. We had no idea, as late as 2:00 on the afternoon of our celebration on June 12th, the committee was down there decorating with some volunteers, and we were still saying, we'll be happy, maybe we'll get 50 people here, maybe we'll get up to 100 people here. We had over 375 people on the waterfront, happy, joyful, people of all ages with nails painted rainbow colors, dads with nails painted, walking hand in hand with their children, nails painted, smiling faces, great music, Derek's going to talk a little bit more about that. The last story I'll tell is about 16 years ago, I'd been in Bucksport since 2003. The statewide nondiscrimination law was going to be on the ballot that November. I was working with the, what we called the Alamosa Progressive Alliance at that point, and they knew my history around gay rights. They said, David, would you be willing to go into the high school and talk with new voters, the seniors and, you know, the students at the high school about this ballot measure that's going to be a yes or no vote on nondiscrimination law that would include sexual orientation as a protected category for the state of Maine? So I made an appointment to talk with the principal, and I was told that if he would invite me in to talk to the civil, I only asked to talk to the civil rights team of the high school. I was told that if he let me come in and talk to them about a gay rights ballot measure that was coming up, and many of them were old enough and would be voting on it, he said his phone would never stop ringing that night and that he would be in big trouble. I'm happy to say that the Orland Middle School got wind of my willingness to share the information, and they asked me to come and talk to their middle school, which was phenomenal for me. I finished my short speech and hands went up in the air, these middle school kids were so willing to talk, so I really think Bucksport missed an opportunity, but that was 16 years ago. What a thrill to know that we are now collaborating fully with Bucksport High School and with the Reach School. We have students in the GSA, the Gay Straight Alliance Groups at both of those schools, that have invited us to come in and talk at their meetings, collaborate on some projects. We have exciting plans ahead that will be a collaboration between the students at both schools and our Pride Committee, and I can't imagine that you're not going to hear a lot and see a lot of wonderful progressive programming for human rights in Bucksport. Thank you to the Reach School and Bucksport High School for opening their GSA, Gay Student Alliances, Gay Straight Alliances, to our work and desire to work for a better community. I'll invite Derek Cole.
So I just wanted to make sure that we didn't forget to thank anybody. I am Derek Cole, I'm one of the seven organizers that were involved with the Bucksport Pride Celebration. Very excited to stand here tonight and share with the council and the community just some of the basic details of our event. On June 12th, we had nearly 400 people, we keep using 375 to 400, and those people came together to celebrate the LGBTQ plus community for the first time on Bucksport's waterfront. I saw people of all ages, genders, color, and sexuality coming together in a beautiful display of love and acceptance. This event spoke to children and adults that otherwise may not have felt accepted in our town, and told them you are loved and there is a place for you in Bucksport. Thank you to all the amazing people that came out to the celebration. We do want to say that we love you and we're here for you and we'll be back next year. I also want to thank all the members of our committee, volunteers, and our community who came together to make this happen, from businesses and residents who hung flags and purchased buttons, to the outpouring of donations received. Because of you, we were able to host a completely free event for all to enjoy. We had live music, free pizza and soda from the Bucksport House of Pizza, free ice cream from Hannaford, and a bustling family section with free activities for all ages. A huge thank you to our sponsors, Bucksport House of Pizza, Hannaford of Bucksport, Unitarian Universalist Church of Ellsworth, Unitarian Universalist Congregation of Castine, Sweet Cheeks Bakery, Equality Maine, Health Equity Alliance, and our private donors. Also a special thanks to the crew at Warren's Waterfront Restaurant and to George McLeod for allowing us to use his space down on the waterfront. They were a huge help and we really need to thank them. All this would not have been possible without the willingness of the Town of Bucksport, Bucksport Public Safety, and the Town Council. We know that new ideas like this can be hard for some to understand and accept, so thank you all for allowing this to happen. You know, our vision became a reality, and everybody that we dealt with navigated this with professionalism, and we're very thankful for that. At this time, we wanted to bring up some folks here. Do you want to welcome them up here, David?
Before I do that, one quick comment on our fundraising. Never before have I pulled off an event where, at the last two weeks before the event occurred, and we're looking at our budget, and we're looking at how many more buttons we would have to sell, and how many folks we would have to cajole into supporting the work, suddenly my phone started ringing. We ended up with major donors two weeks before the event that actually sought us out. They called me and they said, we want to give money to the Pride Celebration, what do you need still, what haven't you covered? So with great joy, we went into that June 12th event with all of our bills already paid, the musicians' fees, the pizza money, everything was covered. Every dollar that was dropped into the bucket that Derek traveled the crowd with was absolute gravy, which has allowed us to do what we're doing tonight, $500 checks to the GSA, the Gay Straight Alliance Groups at Bucksport High School and the Reach School. I'd really like to have Adina Salmanson and Seth LaPlante join us up here.
Good evening. My name is Adina Salmanson, I am the JMG High School Specialist at Bucksport High School, and in addition, I have the joy and I'm humbled to be the representative for the Gay Straight Alliance Club at the high school this evening. I started last year and the students came to me, they asked me if I would be their sponsor, and I was delighted to represent a group that is so bright and so creative and so altruistic in the final analysis. And the lovely gift that we're getting tonight from Bucksport Pride will be used for some of our initiatives, which are all student-led. One of the initiatives that we have is to have a float in the Orland River Day Celebration, which is coming up on September 11th. The next thing is to help kick off the opening of the new teen center here in Bucksport, which sort of was starting up and got shut down because of COVID, and now the students would love to kick it off with a party for all the youth of the area, with the blessing, no pun intended, of Pastor Pete. So this is their vision for what they would like to do with their funds. So, that is my little, and thanks, everybody.
I'll be real quick, Seth LaPlante, Director of the Reach School, and just want to say thank you to Bucksport Pride, not only for the money, but to show our students and our youth and our community that this is a safe and supportive place for all students. A lot of students get support at games and all sorts of different venues, and there are a group that doesn't find support in the community, and in this event showed that support, and so, thank you very much.
Just wanted to hand you the checks early.
I've never been in this position before where I'm actually handing money to somebody that was raised through a gay pride event, and it's going to go into the hands of people who will administrate these funds for programming for LGBTQ plus youth in our community. It's absolutely wonderful to do this, thank you Seth, thank you Adina, and we're on camera.
I'm just going to wrap it up real quickly, we've taken some time, I apologize. So, one last thing, we really are looking forward to next year and also just continued programming throughout the year. June's not the only month to be doing these things, but in June of 2022, we hope to be hosting our second annual Bucksport Pride Celebration and other related events throughout the month. We already have multiple volunteers, vendors, musicians excitedly inquiring about how to get involved. We hope to see Bucksport's community organizations, churches, and businesses lend support as well. This goes out to the community, if anybody would like to participate, please do contact us through Facebook or Instagram. Also, our email is bucksportpride@gmail.com, again, bucksportpride@gmail.com. We look forward to making this an annual month-long event, and we really want to thank you again to everyone that had a part in this, and we look forward to your continued support, thank you so much.
Not on the agenda, but I just wanted to make a quick presentation or recognition. Some of you are aware and some of you may not have been aware, but it was a conspiracy against the town manager a month or so ago, where somebody had put in a nomination paper and through Maine Municipal Association and nominated Sue Asar for Leader of the Year as a town manager. And not surprisingly, Sue won, and was recognized at a banquet that her husband tricked her into going to, and I know Director Gagan and economic fellow Gagan, Rotella went up along with Jake, and her husband, I believe your son was there also?
Yeah, my son was.
Sue was quite alarmed that a secret was able to be kept from her and the town and not her knowing about it, so it was a very nice surprise. Of course, I couldn't make it, but it was a very nice ceremony and a well-deserved award. And Sue, I know is modest and won't say anything, but this award's been given for 20, 30-plus years, she's the only town manager to win this twice. She won it once in Vinyl Haven and now for the town of Bucksport, so congratulations.
I will tell you that being recognized for leadership is the highest honor that I could get. My title is Town Manager, but what I do every day is try to provide leadership that my staff sees as a good thing to follow, and that the people in the community that I represent understand that I care about all of them, and try my best every day to be a good example. Some days I'm good at it and some days I'm not, but it's always my, and you can't be a good leader unless you have really good team members, and we just have awesome, awesome team members and staff and in community members in this community. So, I'm honored, I am concerned that my staff and my elected officials and my husband could totally get this by me, but I appreciate it. I'll let him in the house eventually, kidding.
All right, moving on. Next item is Considered Minutes of previous meetings, we have Town Council Minutes from 7:22 to 21, how the council can proceed?
Motion approved.
Second, all those in favor, opposed. Next is receive and review correspondence. First up is a note from Deputy Chief Denning on staff recognition for a call on 7:18 to 21, hopefully everyone had a chance to read that. Mike, you want to talk to me about that at all, or? Just real quick, you know, go ahead and come on up and, because it was pretty impressive when you, coming from that community, it's pretty impressive when you get notes from outside, so go ahead, please.
So, we had a call come in about 2:00 in the morning, it was over in Orland, for CPR in progress call. Two of our full-timers at the station went and we had a reserve police officer go over to help, I responded directly to the scene from my house. So it was just the four of us on this patient. In my 35 years of doing this, I have never seen such a smooth scene. Usually, how we describe it, organized chaos, and, but walked in, everyone was doing what they had to do, and, you know, what do you want me to do? Put me onto this task? The, we, the crew brought back the patient's pulse several times, and we lost the pulse on the way to Bangor, and we really needed an extra set of hands, so we called Brewer Fire for an extra set of hands, they met us in Root, and the paramedic that night was beyond Samborn, who I've known for over 30 years, knows his stuff, great guy, and jumped on board, and to make a long story short, was very impressed with the crew. When we got back to the station at 5:00 in the morning, I had a text from him, or an email, saying, holy cow, that was one of the best calls I've ever been on, everything was done, and kudos to you guys, so excellent job on the crew, and again, smoothest running scene I've seen for CPR calls ever, so.
Great job, and I will reiterate, I assure the Director well and Deputy Chief Winchester, it takes a while for another person in our profession, your profession, to write something and take the time because it's normal course of duty.
Oh, yeah.
And for somebody to recognize what those folks are doing outside of your own organization, I appreciate you passing that out, because that shows a great job by folks, so.
Got a good crew.
Next, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we have a thank you from home for 2021 donation, I believe that was through our budget process, correct? Two police calls, one in Orland, one in Brona, everybody should have the incidents on those if there's any questions. And finally, we have the Down East Transportation Ridership Report for July of 2021. Questions or comments on any of those? All right, next is an order to consider and introduce, we have our first reading of a remote participation policy.
This is the model policy created by Maine Municipal Association that 30 days after the end of the state of emergency, the ability for communities to, or public entities to meet remotely expired, and the way that that can be handled is for our municipality to create a policy that they adopt that allows for it under certain circumstances, and those are, this follows the law that was written to do that. This was the first reading, the next, the second reading, the public hearing for adoption would be at the September 9th.
Would, and I'm wondering, hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at this, would it be worth it to put this in a committee, just to take a look at it first and then bring it to the meeting after that, or is this something that needs to be acted on?
To be perfectly honest, my concern is depending on where things go with COVID over the next 30 days, we may be back in remote meetings sooner rather than later, and in order to do that, we need to have a policy that, and as I said, this is, this is, exactly covers the law.
And it is from MMA.
And it is from MMA, it's not, there's no frills in this, it just addresses exactly what's allowed.
And we will have a public hearing at the.
And there would be a public hearing on the September 9th. Yeah, I'm just concerned if we move out too many more. I'm not predicting gloom and doom, but, you know, the chances are that we may be back to remote if things don't turn around in terms of some of the numbers on this, so.
Any questions?
I just have one, Mr. Mayor. The first instance of the fourth paragraph that talks about the public will be provided a meaningful opportunity to attend via remote methods when any member of the body participates via remote methods. The only issue I have with that is if we go an entire year, for example, and don't have anybody attend remote, and then we do. And at that point, it is contingent on somebody making sure that there's a remote option for people to participate. It seems to me like that could be clunky, you know, because it's not something that we do with any regularity. And I almost wonder if it's worth either taking that out or just saying that we are going to provide an opportunity for people to participate remotely at every meeting. If we do that, then if we follow that second option, for example, and I don't know that I'm advocating for that except just to say that if we do that, then you won't run the risk of a year going where we're all meeting in person, and then I'm gone, but I remote in, and that means the public gets to remote in, and that eats up the first half hour of our meeting getting that technology put together, as is inclined to happen with people who zoom into meetings every day. I see people who struggle with that every day at work. So, I just... That's the only point that I wanted to make with that is maybe we either leave that out or we have it as an option all the time, or we just maybe consider all of our options there. And I could be persuaded that that... It wouldn't be a clunky process, but I think at least it should be talked about.
This provision is there because the law reads that way.
So that's the law.
This is pretty much thou shalt. You could add that it could be that the public will be provided a meeting opportunity to attend via remote methods, period. You could leave that, the rest of that off instead of saying just when people... But you have to at least, if anyone's remote, allow the public the opportunity to be remote as well. You can be more open, but can't be less, you know, can't be more stringent in how the public is... You can let them in more, but you can't let them in less if that is... But that's why it's there. It's because if, under the terms of law, if one is remote, then the public also gets it. You could have it that you're just gonna let people be remote if they want to. We would have to develop a different technology to allow for that, that's all.
Okay.
So, the line that I'd like a little clarification on, or temporary absence of a member that causes significant difficulty traveling to the meeting location. So if I'm on vacation and we can call it remote, I don't necessarily agree with that.
Again, I didn't write the law.
I know. Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, like...
It doesn't say you have to be away from home for work, or you have to be away from home for whatever. It's that attendance is prohibited by geography or some other... Something that makes it very difficult to attend. It isn't because I want to stay home and not bother.
So, are we allowed to define that as what significantly difficult... Causes significantly difficult traveling to the meeting location? Can we as a town define that?
You can define that that is for work-related purposes or whatever. So if somebody's on vacation, that doesn't count.
Yep, okay. I'd like to do that part, then, is we define that as a council, what that means.
Okay.
And I guess if you had an answer to Paul's question, how clunky is it?
Well...
I mean, we did it for over a year, so I can imagine that is the infrastructure there or...
What we did, allowing participation when we started again, if you remember when Jim was traveling, that we were... We set it up so that he could be seen if he then... Or if he... Or if people wanted to. The phone sits here because this allows participation during a meeting. People can call in. That's participation, and that's... It's still sitting here. But that's why it was, was for that reason. But we also, when it was allowing video, and there was a computer sitting right here that you could see that, so you could all see Jim, and there was a camera on it so that people in TV land could also see him, which is another requirement that if you're remoting, that people have to be able to see and hear you, or at least hear and understand who you are. So, this is not clunky. This is the telephone. People can call up.
Right. Okay. I can certainly be convinced otherwise. I just, even in the example that you just provided, we had a certain amount of time to prepare for that. We knew that that was coming. If, for example, we, on a short notice, I am not going to be able to make it to a meeting, and it meets the criteria that we set forth, as Danny just mentioned, as long as... I'm just trying to... I'm thinking of the people that actually, okay, now we've got to set up for that meeting, that's all I'm saying. I could easily be convinced.
We can respond to that, especially if it's not a requirement that it be a video access, an access.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else on that? Next is discussion items. First is Services Committee update.
Chair?
The Services Committee nominated Ben Keig. Did I say that right?
Kay.
Sorry, Kay. Let me unmute.
All right. And we don't need to take any further action on it, right?
She's...
There it is down there. Thanks. Finance Committee update?
Yes, we met this evening to review the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. And we did brainstorming on different items that we can use the funds for, but our plan is to recommend that we need a process in... Because it's a government program. So we need a process as to how we're going to handle the funds, how we're going to spend it, and we're just taking time of projects. Like, we could possibly use a project for the waterfront. Money's for that. But we have until 2024 to come up with the plans for the funds, but we have to have them in place and spent by 2026. Is that pretty much what we... Any input? So, that's kind of in a nutshell, so that will be an ongoing process. I do have another update, and it's not on the agenda, but it's from the Cemetery Committee. We met on August 3rd to discuss the results of the Oak... The 917 River Road Cemetery. We were reviewing for if we could find the location of bodies in that cemetery so that we could honor the veterans there. Unfortunately, we did not find any location of bodies. We did discuss what we were going to do is to, thanks to Jay in the Highway Department that has done the clearing, we're gonna do clearing, put a fence around the property, and that way we can put up possibly some stones with veterans' names on it to honor them. And is there anything I've left on?
After that meeting, I contacted the property owner. Clearly, from the records that we have, there are Revolutionary War soldiers buried there. The fact that although they did quite an area with the radar and didn't locate bodies, the last burial was there, I believe, was in 1870. And there are very large mature trees in the area, and it would be necessary to try and get more specific, to do a lot of tree clearing in order to try and find that. And the committee's idea was that we know that it was in that area adjacent to the old foundation of that church, and as a means of honoring the veterans that are there in this private cemetery, that the cleared area, and it happens to also be the best area in terms of topography. It's relatively flat. It's large enough to fence. The property owner was very cooperative, but Jay and I went and walked the property with the owner, and then Jay and some of his staff went back and sort of laid out an area that will be cleared more and fill added in order to allow stone placement and that kind of thing, and a fence around the perimeter. So, we are moving forward with all of that at this time, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, sorry. Next is 1861 State Route 46, request from Keith French to redeem property.
Mr. French was in my office last week or the week before, but... And indicated that he wanted an opportunity to request from the council that you not move forward with foreclosure on that property. He indicated that he wanted to pay the taxes and that would... And I indicated that the town had, in 2018, afforded the opportunity for that property to be redeemed from foreclosure under two sets of circumstances, which was the council at that time indicated that all the taxes would be paid and that the property would be cleaned up, because there were significant code issues on it at that time. And taxes were paid in March of 2018, and no further payments were made on taxes on the property. And the oldest tax lien foreclosed in December of 2020. And it wasn't until sometime after that that someone from the family came in and wanted to pay the taxes, and I came to the council and told you that we were in this position again, and the council did not advise me not to go forward with the foreclosure because we had already been down this road. And so that's kind of where we were when Mr. French was in, and I told him that the meeting was tonight at 7:00, that I would put him on the agenda, and...
So as far as we stand right now, it's still in the process, correct?
We would still be moving forward with that. I have sent numerous letters and gotten no response, but...
Any questions?
And I... Luke has... Our code officer has been... He's the one that provided you with photos of the original, and it's my understanding that things have not improved at that property since that time.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Thanks. Item eight's agenda items. First, Resolve 2022-11 to award Public Safety Building renovation project to Orchid Builders for $24,600. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved, second.
Have a motion, a second.
I have a question. Is it okay for me to vote on that? He's my nephew. I don't wanna...
Is he paying you at the same time?
I just wanted to be sure. I wanted to be upfront on that.
I think you'd be all set.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? Everybody saw the packet and the information that was in there?
Yes.
Director Gagin, anything you need to add to what was in the packet?
I don't know. Mr. DC Denning put that together, and he did a good job.
He's already spoken tonight, so I just...
I've been off the quiet. I have nothing to add. He put together very well.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? Close, motion passes. Next is Resolve 2022-12 to approve the purchase of two police cruisers from Augusta Quirk and equipment needed for a total of $97,047. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved, second.
Have a motion, a second.
I'd like to say a couple of things, and then they can move forward, only because the Public Safety Director Gagin and Deputy Chief Winchester came to me to discuss where we stand right now in terms of cruisers and what our needs are. Annually, we appropriate and we go through the process around this time of requiring a cruiser. However, the council has approved a K-9 officer that will be starting after the beginning of the year, and one of the requirements of that program is a cruiser that is dedicated to the dog and the officer as part of it. In looking for bids and how to do this, the question was whether the town should look to take an old one and put the dog equipment in it for now, and then when that one dies, get another one and put the dog equipment in it. And I didn't think that was the most reasonable way to approach this program. The program is a five-to-seven-year program, and purchasing the cruiser that will last the life of the program is... And installing the appropriate equipment upfront is a better, in my estimation, way of doing than doing this twice, starting one way and then... Because in truth, you're putting off the inevitable. If the program is gonna move forward, and the car needs to be outfitted and ready when the dog and the officer are trained. And the other problem that we're encountering is supply, and the same kind of thing for vehicles that the fire department or the public or, you know, the length, the lead time, these two cruisers that we're talking about were ordered by another agency who then declined them. And hopefully, they're still available, because that would make it possible for us to have these and know that we had them in time to... For that. Deputy Chief Denning and Director Gagin have done a lot of work on... But I'm prefacing this because they came and talked to me about my recommendation to them to come to the council and how to do this. So, I know it's a big number, but it's gonna be that price, whether you do it today or you chop it up and try to do it in little pieces, and if you do that, the likelihood of having what you need when you need it may not be there. So, Deputy Chief Denning?
Actually, Winchester is probably...
That's what I meant, Winchester. I'm looking at Denning and saying it.
Questions from anybody?
I know that there was also some donations that came in, too. Where does that come into play?
That is actually... I spoke with a private donor about that, and he wanted to know where we were at, and I told him that we're gonna be doing it in the spring, and he said, "Just to get ahold of them in the spring, and we'll get that $10,000 donation." So that's still coming, but it won't be till spring.
Yep. Will that go towards this, maybe?
It can really go towards anything that you want it to, but we're not gonna get that money until after.
No, I get that, yeah. But it could replenish the reserve account or something if we... I guess one of my questions, I look at this, and I probably missed it. So, a dog car has a unique capacity on the inside, has a cage or something. I didn't see that on here. Is that being taken care of by the grant or something? How does that be?
I'll let Deputy Chief Winchester. He put this all together. I'm not gonna steal the...
Yes, the answer to your question is the grant, the K-9 grant itself has funds donated for the equipment for the K-9. That's not included in tonight's funds.
Okay. I... I just got one more. How many radar units do you guys have now?
Four.
Well, we, yeah, we have four. We have two or three portable ones and the radar's on. And so in cars, it would be four.
Yes.
For how many cruisers?
Five.
Do they work 100%?
Uh, yeah. The one that Director Gagan uses is a handheld unit. It's not mounted in the car, and that works.
I'm just wondering, is there, is there, is this one that we're purchasing here? Is this replacing one, or is this just another one to add? Or how does, how does that work? Because I haven't seen these before in, for a while. They give you budgets. Maybe I missed something.
The four that we have, three of them, I think, are older than me. And one of them was given to us from another agency that's currently in the sergeant's cruiser and is still pretty old. So I don't know if we have any really new, new ones. The handheld one is new. We got from a grant.
The ones we have on the shelf that are sitting there are when I started, so they're all very usual.
They read feet per second.
They're different, very different.
Yes. Any other questions?
So we're buying two vehicles, one for the dog. At least have some improvement ones or?
Part of it is and part of it's out of undigited.
Right.
And one of them is being traded in.
So, and, so again, what's, what's this K-9 car going to do whilst without being used as a K-9 car? Is it going to rotate into the fleet, or is it going to sit and just?
I think it's going to be equipped. I think we'll start the process. We'll grab Matt and have, have him start working on it. We won't have the funds yet from the grant to start equipping it for the K-9 stuff, but we still have to put all of the cruiser equipment from the one we're trading in, into the, into that one.
Well, we're not just going to let it sit for five months, are we, without running it at least, or I?
No.
Okay. But it's not going to be in the, but it won't be in the rotation for patrol cars?
No. It's a five to seven year car for the K-9. It's not going to go into the lead unit for a second.
Right. You just don't want a car to sit out in the town garage for five months, six months while waiting for a dog to get there. At least it will.
No, we can definitely use it.
Yeah. But don't wrap it around a tree.
No, I'm back to the, just to clarify, the $10,000 donation, I am not comfortable with saying that you can take that and put that back into. I'd have to speak with the donor.
Well, and, and.
I understand what you're saying. I just don't know his specific thinking of give it, put it back into town coffers to, into a K-9 program.
Because it's some, I mean, if, where I remember right, this grant is buying the dog food and all this other stuff, right?
Yes.
I mean, those, those costs are already picked up. That's not coming back to the town. But there's got to be some ancillary costs that, that will have, that will be associated with that K-9 that I would assume we could probably use.
Yes, you, yes, exactly. Above and beyond, absolutely, yes.
This training is ongoing, correct?
Correct.
That we have to pick up the bill for some of that. We're hoping that during days that he has a training, or days that he's working anyway, so he will be paid for working and it won't be an overtime issue. We can just cover his shift by somebody that's already working. That's the plan.
Anything else?
But, excuse me, what, what exactly does the, what specifically does this K-9 provide, this, this service?
The dog is required to be dual purpose for the grant. So we have to train it for drugs, narcotics, and it will also be a search dog, patrol dog for missing persons. Those are the two things we're looking to train them in, in or her.
Yeah, thank you.
Has it been decided yet? What kind of, is it in main water or?
We haven't decided yet. We've reached out to the state police K-9 division and they have agreed graciously to walk us through the program. So it will kind of be up to their discretion. They're going to help us. And we may have to travel to get the dog, but we haven't decided yet.
Okay. Anything else? We already have, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is resolve 2022-13 to approve the purchase of a Hopper Sander for a one-ton vehicle. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion of second.
For which truck?
We, when the sewer treatment plant got our hand me down.
Thank you.
When we handed down a truck to the sewer treatment plant, we got a new one.
Yeah.
But we didn't outfit it. We used a used plow on it. And it didn't, it's never had a Sander in it. We're just liking to equip it now, since we have sold our backup truck for downtown. And that's the one we're going to use from now on.
Got you. What number of one-ton Sanders do you have?
We have two. The 5500s.
So this won't make a third, or this will be a second?
This will be the second one. Yep.
And that's what you use primarily for downtown?
Yes. Actually, Kevin, we have two of them. The first one is Kevin's, which is a primary run downtown. This one will be a spare for Kevin's and for the other two runs of the downtown.
Yep. Got you. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is resolve 2022-14 to award heat pump contract to Nor'easter Energy for the town council chambers. As everybody said, the town manager graciously waited until the hottest night of the year to put this in.
Yeah.
How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Seconds.
Motion of second. Any questions?
They do a good job. Put mine in.
Our code enforcement officer did all the legwork on this. I'd like to thank him for that, so that we can get this moved forward if the council is of such a mind to do so. And I didn't arrange the temperature for today to do.
Is there a hose that goes into the code enforcement officer to kind of load?
If we open these doors, Ed, Rich and I might benefit a little.
Sure. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Item nine's resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. Just a reminder, nomination papers are available, available? Papers, paper, oh. Papers must be submitted by September 2nd, 2021 at 5:30 PM to the town office. There are three town councillor positions, one RSU 25 board position. All right. Next is to reappoint Luke Chevelli as CEO, Building Official, Plumbing Inspector, and Street Naming and Numbering Coordinator. How would the council like to proceed?
So moved.
Second.
Don't have a choice. All those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations. The next item is from the Services Committee, to appoint Meg Kay to the Economic Development Committee. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. And the last item on here.
It said Meg is in the back row.
Oh, she did show up. She was here earlier. Meg.
Yeah, I kept hearing the whole time.
Well, well, during the Services Committee, I don't.
Oh, no, right.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. I guess.
Last item, unfortunately, is bittersweet, but we will accept the retirement of J. Michael Jackson at the wastewater treatment operator. If you didn't get a chance, hopefully everybody got a chance to read, read his heartfelt retirement letter. Forty plus, forty years is pretty cool to start and end on the same day and to be able to have a good career down there, so.
Michael is our only employee at the treatment plant. When the town went to a contracted operation for superintendent services, you left that position intact in order to preserve Mike's position with the community. With his retirement, the council has some choices to make in terms of how, whether we replace one employee, or you turn over the, the operation staffing wise to main water. And Dave Micho was in today and he had spoken to Rick Knowlton, who's there, who indicated that if the town chose to do so, that there would no, be no change in the bottom line of the budget if they incorporated that position into their, not that they would do it for the same amount in the contract, but the budget that we currently have for them plus staffing wouldn't be more.
Well, I gotta ask the question. Mike's been here for 40 years. If we were to hire somebody, it would certainly not be at Mike's rate. Correct?
Given the scarcity, well, and I'm being honest, given the scarcity of people going into that position, the competition for people in wastewater is really high right now. You.
I'll tell you what, is, will Dave give us a?
Dave will. This is just, I'm just relaying a message. You're going to need to have a discussion item and have main water here and talk to them. I'm just telling you what they said as a result of this was that if the town chose to look in that direction, that it, it wouldn't jack the budget into some other.
I think, I think sooner than later, I mean, obviously, they're going to need somebody to staff that position. So I would assume that they'd want to come to us with a proposal very soon, that we can then decide which direction we want to go in. Okay. Take a motion to accept his retirement.
So moved with three rats?
Second.
All those in favor? So moved. Next is approval of quick claims, discharges, and bees. First, we have John M. Holyoke and Robin P. Holyoke, joint tennis, tax lien 61929, map 25, lot 14. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor? Next is Wayne Hanscom, tax lien 6192019, map 32, lot 238. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor? Next is Wayne Hanscom, sewer leads 926, 2018, 319, 2019, 926, 2019, map 32, lot 228. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? So moved. Next item is Department head reports, town manager report.
Radio show, drive show, May 92.9 came to Buck Sport on Friday, August 20th, to celebrate Buck Sport's win as town of the year in this year's contest. After coming in second in both 2018 and 2019, and making the top four in 2020, this time Buck Sport made it to the top. And we're thanks to all who took the time to vote, and thank you to Sue and Craig and Rich Rotella for doing the heavy lifting and not only promoting contest participation, but organizing local contests, promoting our local businesses and their products, and putting in the time to make this such a success.
Real quick, Sue, on that. I just want to have a shout out to our Economic Development Director for actually winning the trivia contest. So I felt better that the guy that represents the town for Economic Development could actually beat our superintendent and a local homegrown boy that Rich, Rich served us proud. You'd have a chance. There was a couple of questions that none of them got, and I was disappointed. But Rich came through and, and won the contest. So we can all feel good that he actually does know something about the town.
The retaining walls replacement project starts next Tuesday. Prep work is being done this week, but the actual wall work starts next week. A reminder that tax due date is Tuesday, August 31st. To avoid interest, as of Thursday morning, we had collected 40% of the 21, 22 property taxes, which is excellent, because the actual due date for the first half is still almost a week away. After a very successful season, the Tim Emery Pool will be closing on Sunday, July 20, August 29th. I got the wrong month. We would like to thank the Y for a well-operated season with an average of nearly 100 participants a day. When opened, the pool was a great community asset this summer, with 5,797 pool visits as of August 25th. Also, grade one to six football so far has 41 children signed up, and 58 have signed up for pre-K through sixth grade soccer. The new equipment that was approved for the fitness room is anticipated to be delivered and installed in October. This Friday and Saturday, the Lighthouse Gallery and Main Street Buck Sport will be sponsoring the Arts Festival on the waterfront. We encourage everyone to make a trip downtown to stroll the festival, stop in our shops, and eat at our local restaurants. And as a bonus, the weather is supposed to be nice, so come on down and spend a day or more on Main Street and on the waterfront. We have received the American Rescue Plan Act information from the state of Maine in order to get signed up and be able to request funding that has been designated for Buck Sport. And that information arrived just this morning, and I will be setting up our account with the state next week. School starts for RSU 25 on Monday, August 30th, and that means more buses and more students walking. So please be careful when driving, as our most valuable asset, our children, head back to school. And finally, the Banker Daily News will be doing a pullout section on Buck Sport in the October 8th edition of the newspaper. It will also be available in the digital edition, and I look forward to more good press for this great community. And as a side, I was interviewed on, by a TV station today about the Arts Festival and what I, what I hope to see. And I said, what I really hope to see is not one empty parking space on Main Street, because that means we have a lot of people here enjoying Buck Sport and all that has to offer.
Someone thought there was a way to ride.
Yeah, it's a new cruiser, yeah. And real quick, the folks that did the article on, on Buck Sport.
Oh, the Fallows. Jim and Deb Fallows that were here that Monday and Tuesday in regard to Heart and Soul and that program in Buck Sport, went back and they have a blog that they do. And they, Deb wrote an article.
Public safety crew was under.
They have it under control. Anyway, they did a very nice article about Buck Sport. And that's been, we've received notifications from people all over the country who've seen the article, who follow their, their blog, because they, they traveled 100,000 miles around this country initially and did, wrote a book called Our Town, and that was made into a documentary. And they have a lot of followers. So Buck Sport is.
Is that article up on our website, or?
It can be.
Can be. Because if you haven't read it, it actually is a pretty good article to read.
That'd be nice.
I will put that on our website.
Thanks. Any questions on any reports or anything? Next is public hearings, approval of licenses and permits. First is a central main, central main power pole location permit intersection of Bucks Mills Road and Russell Hill Road. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Permit issued. Oh, is that Rich?
Yeah.
Okay. Second is central main power, new service installation intersection of Duck Cove and Mast Hill Road. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor? Next is a application for Buck Sport Bay Business Coalition LLC for Ghoul Sport, parade on 10/23/21. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
Any questions, or?
Car park was hit in the parking lot.
Okay.
So they're dealing with that. If you have questions, I, the parade route will be, the parade route will be similar to what it's been when it was Ghost Port in the past.
I didn't know the, the chief or anybody had any concerns with?
Deputy Chief Winchester asked about the parade, parade in specific. And I confirmed with him this morning, actually, that it is the exact same route as when it was the Ghost Port. That seemed the biggest concern that they had.
All right. Any questions from the council?
Yes.
All those in favor? Opposed? One other that was also, wasn't just on the agenda, but has been submitted is a license application for Buck Sport Arts Festival for Main Street Buck Sport, taking place this weekend. How would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Ghoul Sport's all set, you're good to go.
Wait, what?
Ghoul Sport's all set.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, thanks.
All right. Next is discussion items on the agenda for the council, the public. Start with the public, maybe anything they want to talk about?
I just wanted to make one point about the Arts Festival this weekend, and I do apologize. Sort of like with the Pride Festival, my staff is gone. I only have Ron, and Ron has a volleyball game this weekend. So, if the folks running the art festival, if they see the garbage overflowing like the Pride folks did, if they can just help out until one of us can get back. I'm moving my daughter into college that day, so I won't be around either, so, again, the timing just wasn't right. But we're glad to have another event on the waterfront, and if anything's needed, just to let me know and I'll help out again.
Congratulations on your daughter going to college.
Thank you.
Don't cry.
I'll try not to.
Go ahead and cry. We're all allowed to cry.
And he will. I did.
I did once.
I did too, right? So.
Public, council, anything?
I do.
Yes.
I just wondered, I've had numerous people ask about Whole Oceans again. Are they ever going to come in and give us a report or what's going on or?
I got an email from their attorney this past week that, in response to an email that I sent saying, "How are we doing?" And the response was that although they continue to have some management changes, there's another one, that they remain committed to the project and are looking to have the right people in place in order to move that forward, but that they, they were still committed to doing the project as outlined previously. That's the update that I got. I did indicate that it would be wonderful when they settle on this individual to make a trip here to talk to the council so that they could answer people's questions and concerns about the fact that it's been a while since that permit was issued.
So, there's no start date of any sort? Have nothing?
I don't. Did I ask?
I'm sure you did. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Yes.
Yes.
Many people have approached me in regard to the situation, how things are going on with the town. Not real pleased with the fact that the town office is closed on Friday, and they'd like to see something done about that.
Anybody else?
Volunteer fair, where do we stand on that? Anything? The one we talked.
Yeah.
I don't think we stand anywhere with it at the moment.
Yep.
Just wondering. One thing I have, and it's personal, but it's also, I've been approached by several folks. If we could ask Director Gagin, can we take a look at the intersection of Duck Cove Road and 46? Oh, you have something to say?
I wrecked there two weeks ago.
Okay.
Please.
It's, I have almost been involved, obviously my son was, and I've had some folks that have had close calls there, and just going through there, it certainly looks like it could make sense, or at least have a look at, of having it, heading out, making it one way, but, and just having it headed out one way. And then, incoming traffic basically goes down to Russell Hill and make that intersection there. And at Russell Hill, I think we just need to look at either better signage or a white line across the road or something because folks are coming down over the hill from both directions, and again, these are, I haven't had that happen, but they're just rolling through and trying to make that. But that intersection at Duck Cove and 46, I think we really need to take a hard look at that and try to maybe put that.
Since I had my accident there two weeks ago, you don't even know how many people have told me I've had an accident, almost had an accident, my insurance agent had an accident. Like, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, I know of several accidents, and unfortunately, some of those get anecdotal when they say, "I almost had one," because when you get the data and where they have reports, unfortunately, sometimes these things don't show up, and that's what the state places, that's how they work things. Anytime you have an accident, it's a good thing to have. Trust me, I've been there, seen that, done that. But just recently, it just seems, that road especially now is getting more traffic, and there's, there's not much up there between Russell Hill and that intersection where I don't think we couldn't, you know, at least look at that to affect that in a one-way position, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next item is upcoming public hearings, designation topics for committee assignments and scheduling for committee. What I would like to do is set up a regular regulatory review just to start the process with the Hopper funds, I mean, just so we can figure out what, how we want it to look and where we want it to go, so.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't know who's on the regulatory review, but I think that might be Mark and Danny and Paul.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. I don't care if we do it at the next meeting or maybe the second meeting in September, but, you know, if we can get that process started. I know, what did we have at the first meeting? We have, do we have something scheduled for the first, just only just a public hearing? Okay. So, maybe we can do, if you guys don't mind, how about that first meeting in September, just to take a look at it?
Yep.
September 9th.
Six o'clock.
Just start at six o'clock, and, you know, it only lasts a half an hour, just to get the process started, so.
Okay. Luke, anything on the waterfront at all, or?
Stuff's happening, but there's not really much to talk about.
Okay.
We don't have any numbers to present to.
Okay. All right. Trying to think, any other committee assignments we needed to set up? Everybody all set right now?
I'm set.
Okay. Other than that, item 15 is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you.